Got a thumbs up.
All right.
Who's up there today?
All right, good evening, welcome to the Oviedo City Council chambers. If everybody would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to what we just said. One nation under God, and with the Lord we testify.
Mr. Cobb, would you mind leading us in the invocation tonight?
I'll be happy to, Deputy Mayor. If you'd like to pray with me, please do so at this time. Father God, we come to you tonight and seek your guidance. We seek your wisdom and we seek your direction. Please be with us tonight as grant our council wisdom, grant them patience, and grant them the ability to take care of the city's business that needs to be done. We ask that you be with our city, Lord. We ask that you bless us. We ask that you reach down and place your hand upon us and keep us safe from this virus that we are, is now consuming our lives. Please deliver us through it, Lord. We understand that the worst is yet to come, but we know that with your guidance that we will make it through. We ask that you bless us and we bless all that are watching on the YouTube and we bless that you be with our community, Lord, in your name. Amen.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. It's Monday, April 6th at approximately 6:30 PM. We have all members of council present. Okay, there's no ceremonial items. Okay, first on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Oh wait, yeah, approval of the minutes. What's the pleasure of council?
Mr. Chairman?
Madam Mayor?
I move we approve the minutes.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay. All right, we're up to public comment. I have one written comment that I can read. I don't believe I got any written requests from anybody, so I'll go ahead and read this. "Good evening, first I hope this email finds everybody doing well and staying healthy. My name is Dean Tasman and my son Ian Tasman is in the process of building a pharmacy on Central Boulevard. As of today, we have received approval of the site plan, so I would like to thank the Planning Department for all their help and hard work. As you're aware, we are unsure of the timeframe of the coronavirus and the separation requirements set in place by the CDC. I was hoping we could address the possibility of obtaining a drive-through for the pharmacy. We feel the pharmacy drive-through would benefit both employees and customers in today's current climate as well as in future, as well as in the future uncertainty. We know there was an exception in the code made for relatively non-essential retail space Starbucks, so we would like to, to ask you to afford us the same exemption. Please write back with questions or concerns, best, Dean." Okay, so I have no other written requests. Is there anybody else wishing to speak that's outside? Are we? Anybody? No? Okay, so I will close public comment. Okay, we're on to the consent agenda, items four through eight. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Chairman?
Madam Mayor?
I move we approve the consent agenda but amend the Resolution 3906-20 to include in Section 4 the face mask recommendation that the CDC has added.
Okay, do I have a second with the amendment? Don't have a second. Anybody? Okay. So, can I get another, another, another vote on this or another motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Redd?
I move we accept the consent agenda and pull off number eight for further discussion.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. So we're, we're, the, the motion on the table is to accept items four through seven. All those in favor of the, oh, is there any discussion? Okay, all, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, so now we're on to item eight. So let me pull that up.
And if you hit the very last attachment in that grouping, that's where you can find Section 4. But I'm just proposing we amend.
Okay, I don't, very last attachment?
It's the actual resolution.
Okay, um, it's a resolution. Mr. Cobb, can you enlighten us on this one?
Uh, yes, Deputy Mayor. This is a request for the City Council to, it's, it's adopt a resolution to confirm the local state of emergency that's been declared for the city as well as confirming the actions that have been taken through emergency management, the emergency management issues that have been taken to date. Section 20-5 of the Code of Warnesses requires that any declaration of a local state of emergency be confirmed by the City Council through a adoption of a resolution and also confirming any emergency management measures that have taken place to that point. That's what this resolution does. It states the reasons for us declaring the mercy, the mercy, declaration of mercy. And then it also confirms the declaration that was issued by the mayor on March the 11th. It confirms the executive order that was issued for us to have this modified meeting format. It encourages residents to adhere to, and businesses, to adhere to the CDC coronavirus recommendations. It encourages residents and businesses to adhere to the executive orders and proclamations and declarations of the governor, our county, the surgeon general, and the president. And then it confirms the actions that have been taken to date such as, you know, the closing of our parks, the certain parks, the closing of our playgrounds, the take, the taking, removal of the basketball rims and backboards, and the closing off of the city buildings to the, to the public, the modified, our modification of no face-to-face utility payments, and then as well as the modifications in development services. So it does all these things that Section 20-5 that it requires. And so it's recommended that the City Council adopt Resolution Number 3906-20.
All right. All right, what's the pleasure of council?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Redd?
I, I think we covered the intent of the CDC recommendation, so I'm good with the way it's written. I think everyone knows that if they want to, they can wear masks. I'd hate to be prescriptive and alienate those that can't get a mask and, and are stuck without one, so let's, let's just leave it the way it is.
Okay. All right, do we, so is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second for discussion purposes.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Okay, um, you, do you have anything else to add?
Nope.
Okay, Madam Mayor?
Oh, we go ahead and list out all of the recommendations of the CDC except for the recommendation to wear a homemade mask. I, I don't see why we would exclude any recommendations put out by the CDC. So I'd like to see that added.
All right, is there any other discussion?
Well, if the resolution states that the other provisions and, and the executive orders by the governor and by, and recommendations by the CDC, if we're going to list one, you should list them all. And if we're incorporating all those, it seems like it's already in there, just not specifically. So it would kind of be repetitive.
Maybe we should delete A through L then, to be consistent. It's, it's really a ceremonial thing to add it in there. Clearly, three of us here tonight are wearing masks on the dais. We've got a couple of staff members that you may, may not be able to see from the cameras wearing masks. So it's something that I, I think people need to be aware is recommended by the CDC at this time.
Ms. Smith? It's recommend, it's recommended.
Correct, the CDC.
They have been, they have been recommending it. So are you saying it's gone beyond recommend?
It, it, yes, so the surgeon general, though he previously said stop buying masks, he personally has done a 45-second demo of how the public can make a mask. So the, the federal government officially recommends this, coming from the CDC.
And again, recommend, as opposed to what they were doing before as recommending, right?
No, before they were saying that only people who are infected and have tested positive should wear a mask. Now they are saying everyone should wear one as a preventative sort of a thing.
About, I'm, you know, I, I guess my other question is, if it's already spelled out in the CDC guidelines, then would we have to go back in if the CDC does recommend other things and place it in this?
I guess if, if, if we were to delete subsections A through L, no. So as this is drafted right now, the CDC's recommendations are listed below where the general statement is made that we're going to follow the CDC's recommendations and then it starts listing them out. So all of them are listed except for the mask wearing. So to, I think getting to your question, to make it so we never would have to change it, we'd have to delete them all or add this in? And, you know, if it changes, then we cross that bridge later.
All right, is there any other discussion?
I'm just good the way it is.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, if I could address Councilwoman Smith's question. When we wrote it, we knew that the CDC would probably come out with new things. And when we wrote it, the A through, A through L was what was listed at the time. And so at the end of Section 4 is why we put in there including but not limited to. So that, to give us, as, as Councilwoman Smith said, to give us that flexibility. If something new got added, then it would fall in place with our resolution. It wouldn't be something that, the face, I think it's called face covering. I think it's what, the, the web, the webpage says face covering. And it just came out on Saturday. And the, it does include, it includes a video by the surgeon general. He's, I think he takes a hand towel and wraps it up, rubber band, and shows you how to apply it to your face. So it is part of what is being recommended now. But that is one of the things that we did with this one. We knew it doesn't require people, it encourages people and businesses to adhere to the CDC guidelines. And, but we, we purposely put in there including but not limited to, just so that, as Ms. Smith pointed out, something new comes along, it's something that we can encourage, you know, our residents and our businesses to follow. So it was something that we did. And like I said, it, it just came out Saturday. You know, it wouldn't be difficult to add it in if you, if the council wanted to add it in.
Well, I mean, I think we, we, we covered it in there with, with not limited to. I mean, it's, it's there, it's, you know, and, and the motion on the table is to adopt it as written. I, you know, I feel like we, we, we cover it either way. I'm, I'm pretty much indifferent to, to, you know, either way, but we, we have a motion on the table right now to just adopt it as written. So I, you know, I, I think, you know, we're fine the way it is, so. Is there any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll take a vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving along. Let's see, there's no public hearings, no first reading of ordinances. We're on to Resolution, or on to item number 11, Resolution Number 3904-20. Mr. Cobb, can you provide an introduction?
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Mr. Boop is going to provide the staff presentation. This is a, we're asking tonight that the City Council approve an agreement with Bank of America for a lease purchase program that we're doing. While he's walking up, I, I can tell you that we received an extremely good offer on this, extremely low interest rates. We're very surprised that they haven't been pulled at this point. But I wanted to have Mr. Boop come in. He knows the details of this. I can give you the elevator, Chamber of Commerce version of it, but I think it's important tonight that we let Mr. Boop explain this to you and how the inner workings of the agreement. So I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb, Honorable Mayor, Mr. Chairman, City Council members. And what you have before you tonight for your consideration, as Mr. Cobb mentioned, is a lease purchase agreement in the amount of $1,385,799.99. There's two components to this lease. There's a five-year component as well as a seven-year component. The five-year component totals $770,799.99, and that's at 1.0305% interest. And as Mr. Cobb stated, that is a very competitive, almost unheard of interest rate. The five-year component covers three types of equipment, an ambulance for $375,000. Its expected life is seven years, five years in service, two years in reserve. Toro equipment totaling $267,000 comprised of, of equipment for the Recreation Department to take care of the parks. That has an expected life of five to 10 years. Police radios totaling $110,000 which have an expected life of approximately 10 years. There is, cost of issuance associated with the five-year note totaling $18,799.99. That brings the total to the five-year note of $2,770,799.99. Now, the seven-year component is totaled $615,000, and that is at 1.1611% interest. And that is for a fire engine for $600,000. That fire engine is expected to be in service for 12 years, 10 years active, and two years in reserve. The cost of issuance associated with this component of the note is $15,000, bringing the total to $615,000. The total for the five-year component of the note and the seven-year component of the note is $1,385,799, $799.99. Staff prepared the fiscal year, fiscal year 2019-20 budget with the expectation that we would finance this amount or an amount not to exceed $1,388,000, so we hit it pretty close. The debt service payments are incorporated into the fiscal year 2019-20 budget. It's recommended that City Council approve or adopt Resolution 3904-20, and I'm here to ask any additional questions that you might possibly have.
Anybody have any questions to Mr. Boop?
Just, just curious, this interest rate, did you know about it before the, this Corona?
Absolutely not. I was talking to the mayor earlier today, and I would like to tell you that it took a lot of skill to get this work done. However, it was just pure dumb luck that we hit the market at just the right time under the right circumstances, and that precipitated the results that we got. And just great work by the folks in the Finance Department, Janet Vivian, purchasing agent, our FA and bond counsel, and of course, our city attorney. They all did a great job in making this come to fruition.
All right, any other questions? All right. Thank you, great work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, what's the pleasure of council?
I move we adopt Resolution Number 3904-20.
Thank you. I got a motion and a second. Okay, Madam Mayor?
This is a loan that beats the rate of inflation. So while usually I dislike any kind of borrowing at all, this is, in a way, it's making money for the city. So it gives us liquidity and it, it just seems like, I, I don't know why the banks are doing it, but I'm glad they are.
Okay.
I'm good.
Good? Ms. Smith?
Yes.
You're good? Okay. No, I, I think this is, I think this is great. I've, I've always been a big proponent of having the, the current taxpayers pay for the benefit of the current assets that are, that they're using. So even though, you know, I, in, in most cases, you know, debt's not a, debt's not a good thing, this allows for, you know, the, the current residents to pay only for the portion of what they, what they're using in that time period over, it's over the life of the asset. So, you know, I think this is great, the interest rate's wonderful, so great job to, to city staff, Mr. Boop. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote. Motion on the table is to approve Resolution 3882-20. All those, let's see, I'm sorry, 3904-20. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, moving right along. All right. All right. We're up to...
They're just hanging up, you're good.
They're hanging up? Oh, great. Okay, we're up to the city manager's report.
I have no report, Deputy Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Hall, do you have a report?
I do not.
Okay, no report? All right, we're on to me. Okay. The, well, I just wanted to go back and say the, the state of the city, it was, it was different, but it, it turned out to, to me to, to work out pretty well. I think it was informative to, to individuals and I think, you know, for the most part, we, we did a good job. The, one, one thing I wanted to just touch on real quick, and, and I received, I received a few phone calls about this and, and stuff, is updates on social media pertaining to the coronavirus. I think that, you know, it's, it's my opinion that we need to just continue with, with facts or just providing what the county and the city, you know, put out officially without giving too much of our opinions on there because people have, they've questioned me on, you know, is this, is this mandatory? Should we be doing this? Should we not? And I don't know if it'll open us up to individual or, or the city up to any kind of liability if we, we come out there with our opinions and people take it as gospel for the city. So I think we just need to be really careful with, with what we post and how we post it on social media. That's about all I have. The, as for the item that was, was sent to us for public comment, Mr. Cobb, I'll, I'll let the, the city kind of use their, what, use their judgment on how they want to handle that and, and we'll, you know, we'll go from there, but that's all I had. Next up is Councilman Chudnow.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I've been monitoring a lot of the sites on the coronavirus and I, I listened in to the Zoom meeting with the, the school superintendent today. Real informative what they're doing and how they're handling the, the distant learning. And from what I, I've talked to some people in some other counties, it seems like Seminoles above and beyond is getting to the distant learning a lot sooner and a lot better than a lot of other counties, so it's kudos to them. One thing, and, and, and just to follow up what, what you had talked about, about, about people posting, there's been some interesting posts on some of the social media, especially the next door. Some people posting as very knowledgeable when there aren't. I know there's not much we can do about it, but just to let citizens know that, that to look, to watch for who's, who's posting and taking information from reliable sources is, is the most important thing. The last thing I have is with Easter and Passover rolling up, I know it's a little different this year for everybody on, on both holidays, but Happy Easter and Happy Passover, and we'll just do our best to, to make do our celebrations how we have to.
All right. Senator, you got? Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. Since our last council meeting in March, we were scheduled to have a number of Java with Judas. We did meet at Mr. Coleman's Barbershop on Wednesday, March the 11th, and discussed a number of things of interest to the citizens of Oviedo. This was at the beginning of the COVID-19 situation. Due to the COVID-19 situation, we've not been able to meet face-to-face, but I've monitored the needs of the community. One of the first priorities in addition to social distancing is to ensure that members of our community are adequately fed. Please do not hesitate to reach out to someone if you do not have adequate food. There are many organizations providing non-perishable food supplies. Other issues will have to be addressed once the COVID-19 situation is under control. You must make sure that you have food for your families. Please do not be afraid or ashamed to reach out for help. The Seminole County School Board have food pantries set up. Some schools also provide meals, daily meals. Please call the school board number, and I meant to put it on in the paper and I didn't, but please call them for more information. Yesterday, Oviedo High School stated that they're in need of supplies, a replenishment for their pantry, it's low. I did call them, and you call them before you go because you'll end up just leaving it outside of the, their office, but they're, they're in need of all kind of non-perishable things. There are also several groups, organizations, and churches that also have food pantries. One organization, the Sikh Society, located on 2527 West State Road, Ford 26, on Sundays from 11 to 2 PM are offering vegetarian meals throughout the month of April, and the phone number for information is 407-409-2496. There are a number of assistance programs available also. One way to find out about them, if you're not internet savvy, you may call 211, and that is the number for the United Way. And they are a information and referral source, and they can give you a lot of things that are available. They should be able to give you all sorts that are available. I would like to thank all of the city employees for continuing to do an excellent job under the most difficult of circumstances. And as I prepare to observe the Passover starting sundown Wednesday, along with the nation of Israel, I pray that the deep meaning of this observance, particularly this year, will not escape us. Likewise, for Christians who will celebrate the death and resurrection of Jesus on Sunday, may you also grasp the deep significance of the celebration this year. Our world has changed suddenly, but we are not without hope. I will miss being able to give an embrace or a hug of encouragement. I will now have to use the symbol that Mr. Spock from Star Trek fame used as a greeting. And as we continue to work our way through the COVID-19 situation, may each of you seek your Creator while He may yet be found. And until we all meet again, I'll see, can I do it? Live long and prosper.
All right.
Our credit fingers can't do it all the way.
All right, Mayor Slade.
All right, well, I, for next door neighbor, I changed my address today in response to having heard about some of these posts. So by scooting my address to the east, I was able to go and respond to some messages that appeared to be a person speaking from the office of the mayor. Just for clarity's sake, I, I, I posted that people should look for City of Oviedo City Administration, that that is the office of the mayor. So as I see these coming up, I will go and just post this standard thing that says, you know, if you want to reach me directly, here's how you do it. Refer to the office of the mayor as the City of Oviedo City Administration, because I think there has been a lot of confusion, since people reached out to me. I in turn reached out to Mr. Cobb, who reached out to Chief Coleman. So that situation we're working on. On the Facebook front, I went rogue, guys. I totally went rogue, and I told people that I thought we should wear face masks, and I'm still saying it, and the CDC now is saying it. So I, I, I took a, took a guess and went all in, and I am glad that now the federal government agreed. So aside from that, hopefully I'm not posting anything, I don't think I'm posting anything opinion, and a lot of it is not even related to city business. So hopefully that we'll keep on with that, that kind of thing, but I appreciate everybody who's been, who is on social media, who is sharing the city stuff. I'm doing that as well, and the county, and, you know, just helping information flow. Before all this happened, though, I did get a chance to go to the Seminole County History Fair. Our Oviedo students were rocking it. So when this is all over, I, I think it would be great if we could get some of them to maybe, yeah, somehow recognize some of the students who, whether they're seniors and they have not been whether they're seniors and they have not been able to get as much recognition as they normally would have for whatever, whatever great things they've done, get our seniors in here, get some of our fifth graders and our eighth graders in here, and just give them a round of applause for all the things that they've accomplished that kind of have fizzled out. And I appreciate Councilwoman Smith sharing the list of all the places where food pantries are available because Hope's Food Pantry is right now not available. They had a, a staff member exposed to COVID-19 and have had to stop for two weeks. So a lot of other people stepping up. But we've got lots of, lots of opportunities for people to get food. I don't know that the schools are, are giving it to people who are not related to students, but lots of churches and stuff. So that's it from, from my end, and thank you to everybody who is wearing masks out there. My glasses, you probably can't see it on YouTube, my glasses are fogging up. Every time they fog up, I don't get annoyed anymore. I just think, it's working. I'm making vapor. Maybe I'm infected and the, and I'm catching it in my mask.
All right. Councilmember Britton?
Okay, well, there's a lot of information going around. My wife and I work at the Space Center. They're in what they call a category three, where we've, all non-essential workers have been working from home since before St. Patrick's Day, where you don't plan to go back until May. There's a few folks out there working mission-critical stuff for some of our missions. But we get emails from the administrator, from the federal government, from CDC, from our bosses, from our bosses' bosses. So it's, it's very hard to go through it, and then I get the emails from Brian every day and, and go through that. So there's a lot of information out there. It's hard to go through it all. The best thing I see is folks are really doing a good job. I ask everyone I, I see or come in contact with, who do you know that has the virus? And I have yet to find one person that knows someone who has it. So that, that means we're doing a good job. Everyone is, is being careful. We don't have a mask in our house. I think my wife might have found a, a few that she had from a few years ago. But, you know, I want folks to, you know, not feel uncomfortable, just practice social distancing, and we're going to get through this. Now, when do we get through this? And I always like to look ahead, and I was thinking about the nonprofits that are hurting right now, but I, and I'll, I'll just throw it out there. I think we should take one of our marquee events and make it a festival of some sort, a music festival, and make it a free event, but make it a fundraiser to replenish the nonprofits, Hope Helps, or, or whoever, whatever. You know, we can work those details out later. But I'd like to see this come about, you know, this summer sometime and say, let's, let's get together and give thanks and, and let's, let's go replenish these, these food banks. So that's all I have right now, and I hope everyone's doing well. And do your jobs. We're, we're going to get through it. That's it.
Sounds good, thank you. All right, is there anything else for the good of the order?
Oh, if I could mention one other thing about masks, just in case anybody happens to be watching this on YouTube. You don't have to have an official mask, and the government is not recommend, is recommending that we do not go try to buy them, not the, not the medical grade. So what they're suggesting is just get two layers of anything, tie it around your head. Today, I was experimenting with a scarf and hooking it above with a... Yeah, there you go, yeah. Just a scarf and just cover your nose and your mouth. It's not an official, you're like, we're, we're not making surgical-grade stuff here. It's to contain your coughs, contain your sneezes. And when you breathe and you have glasses, fog up your own glasses instead of possibly vaporizing some COVID-19 virus out there in the world for others. So it's, it's more to protect others from you in case you're infected and don't know it. So I just want to encourage everybody to look stupid, or not stupid, you know, look, look like you're wearing a mask. Look however it is you look when you wear a mask because it's not that big of a deal.
Okay, all right. All right, so future meeting day. Right now, we only got one, Monday, May 18th, 2020, at 6:30 p.m. Is that correct, Mr. Cobb?